Let's begin our meeting. Okay, today is July 27th at six o'clock. And we have a planning commission meeting this evening. Let's begin by, I'll lead us in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
We have five items on the agenda this evening. Items one and two, we will are both legislative actions and we will hear them concurrently. Items three and four are by the same applicant, we'll hear them concurrently. Noting that item three, concept plan approval is an administrative decision. And item five is also a single item will, it's a legislative action. Let's do roll call. And begin with Commissioner Whitlock. Please state your full name and whether you have any conflicts of interest.
I'm Jeffrey David Whitlock and no conflicts of interest.
Miles Miller, no conflicts.
Reline Wally, no conflicts.
Daniel Gonzalez, no conflicts.
Robert Knudsen, no conflicts.
Melissa Kendall, no conflicts.
All right, item one, Brad McKay requests approval of a general plan map amendment to appendix C6 in relation to adjustments of development standards in the SDP 5 zone, Lakeview North neighborhood. And I'm reading in number two, Brad McKay requests approval of an ordinance text amendments to chapter 14.49E Provo City Code to adjust development standards in the SDP-5 zone and to amend the related development agreement. This is in the Lakeview North neighborhood and turn the time over to planning staff, Aaron Ardmore for for your report.
Okay, thank you. So you may recall, we just had these items two weeks ago for you, for those of you that were on the planning commission at the time. I know we have some new members, so I'll try to do do a little bit of background information for you. So the, the first slide I have here is what was adopted in 2008 for this SDP 5 zone in relation to the zone adoption was this map that got brought in as a general plan appendix. Over the years, as ownership changed and development plans have changed, this map is no longer accurate. A couple of the big differences are the, the new Lakeview Parkway wasn't shown. Wasn't in the concept of 2008. The new high schools there, there's also a new I thought I had a laser pointer, I'm sorry. There we go. It's not showing on that screen, not connected. All right, so Lakeview Parkway now runs, you'll see on the next map, but it runs out like this. So that was an imagine on this concept. Of course, the new high schools here, there's changes up through this area because of a future school site. And then in addition to those kind of foundational changes that have already occurred, there's the, the development plan of the applicant. And we'll get into that in a little bit, but here's the proposed replacement for that map. So this would be a general plan appendix to replace this general plan appendix and you can see there the Lakeview Parkway new residential village on the west side of that. You can see the, the future elementary school site. But also a major difference between these two maps is where the commercial was slated. In 2008, they thought the best place for the commercial would be out here along Geneva. That's all the pink building, but with the addition of Lakeview Parkway and the completion of 2000 North, this really becomes the major intersection of this area. So the idea is to move the commercial over to this area in Village 7. The applicant has also been working through villages, villages one and two. And then the yellows, most of Village 1 has been built out and a good portion of Village 2 has now been built out. So the idea here is to can update the map to correspond with the existing development and to also correspond and be congruent with the proposed text changes that we'll get into in a second. So I'll be referring to this map again, but let's get into the, the proposed text changes. I've got all the pages here. If you, if any of the commissioners want to go to any certain line, we can go to that, but let me just give a quick overview. So last time we talked about kind of the, a lot of the changes, updating the zone name from the original celebration to Broadview. Rearranging the villages. Here you could see the different color scale, had these different villages and different unit types for those. The new idea is to kind of rearrange those and provide some more flexibility within those villages. So most of the density would be in villages six and four here. Like I said, Village 1 and 2 are pretty much built out as single family detached homes. Villages 3 and 5 aren't currently owned or controlled by the applicant. So as we go into the amendments, I want to just point out some, some things, some major changes. Rather than going with kind of antiquated standard land use code numbers, as you can see here on these pages. They're going, they're wanting to transition to a table for permitted, non-permitted or conditional uses. And they do that for both the residential and the commercial zone. So that's one major change. Also putting all of the zone standards into a table as well, this 14.49E 050, the table of bulk and intensity requirements. So all the villages are arranged with different parameters for lot size, building height, lot coverage setbacks, things like that. And they're all within that table now rather than in each individual village subsection. Those are kind of the biggest changes that they're making to the code. They've also made some some alterations to requirements. They've, they're proposing to remove design review committee approval or review for specific single family homes. And as part of that, they're removing the my clicker stopped working. Sorry. You can see this in your staff report, they're removing the example photos of the single family homes that were certain architectural styles. So this is all an effort to give them more flexibility as the market changes, as they develop more of the project. They're hoping to provide more flexibility within the zone to, to do some different architectural standards to provide, to provide some more different product types. The other two things that I noted in my staff report were, were the, the second kitchen allowances currently allowed in a couple of the villages, but they are proposing to strike that out. And then they had some additional restrictions on RV storage, which they're proposing to strike out. So we went through most of these things two weeks ago. There were some concerns noted by staff and, and kind of segmented by the planning commission in that hearing. During that hearing, the applicant offered to, to make adjustments to those. Since that time, he has made those adjustments and that's the, that's the amendment you have in front of you. As staff read through this, this revised amendment, all those concerns were satisfied. We, we don't really have any other major concerns at this time for the proposed text amendment or the related general plan map amendment. And we would, we would recommend that the planning commission forwards a positive recommendation to the city council on both these items. That's all I have prepared, but I'm happy to take in any questions.
Yeah, are there any, any questions from the commissioners for planning staff?
Aaron, on item number two, page, page nine. It talks about, I should guess the P stands for permitted and the N for not permitted.
I'm sorry, I, I was trying to get into the pages in order, can you repeat that?
For permitted and ends for non-permitted on this page nine. Down here it says mobile homes permitted. Modular, not mobile, modular homes.
Modular homes, yes. Yes, that's, that is what they're proposing. Staff didn't have any issue with that.
Well, I've got you on page seven, where it gives the list of all of the sections. There's some sections down there where it says like section 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, where it talks about mansion homes, courtyard homes, urban homes, for those different designs that were at the time thought to be built.
Yeah, so.
Ever built?
No, not yet. So Jevon, if you can go back to the, the first slide of the, the current general pen appendix map for me. Two more. All right, so those were all up in this area. So your mansion homes, courtyard homes, all that was up in, in these villages up here. If you move forward a slide, Jevon. Yeah, advance a slide. So that has not been built. Most of that was proposed in Village 5, which the, the, at the present time, the developer doesn't control. But as he kind of excluded those sections in his amendments.
Right.
He is providing, or they are providing similar type of products. The allowance for similar type of products in some of the villages four and six. So there's still going to be a variety of products, just not as specific as the, the original plan.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question? Can you clarify more about modular, modular homes? Like what, what does that encompass exactly? What kinds of things would fit into that?
Modular homes, if I understand it correctly, are kind of prefab homes. Maybe the applicant could better answer that.
Okay, in particular, like tiny homes even?
In any particular zone? I need to say it again.
If you could, for the record, just kind of summarize.
Yeah, I, the, the reason we included modular homes in the Ivory Homes does not manufacture pre-built homes. That, that's basically what they are, is pre-manufactured homes. We don't do that, but, so you most likely won't see that here in any of our products, but I believe we have to allow them because they're a requirement in most zones, so.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners have questions for staff? Aaron, I have a kind of a, it's kind of a question, but it seems like seems like our, our commission had discussions probably a year, year and a half ago talking about granularity in zoning versus non-granularity and like how detailed it looks like it gets to in a given neighborhood or, or in this case of village. And would, and by looking at what they're offering here, it sounds like you'll be able to have a lot of different housing types within, within a village. So it's, it's more integrated, I guess, or variety is integrated rather than sectioned off, like you know, the, these 20 acres are going to be 4,000 square foot homes and these 10 acres are going to be townhomes only. It sounds like, it sounds like it'll, there'll be more integration with housing type, a variety of housing types. Is that?
No, that's, that's correct, yeah. And, and Steph appreciated that aspect of this amendment of, you know, if you look at this, these uses throughout these villages, you, you will naturally be open to having a townhome next to a single family home that's just down the street from an apartment complex. So it's, it's not these siloed product types that you get in a lot of developments or in a lot of cities. We like the, the kind of variety per village that, that this would offer.
Thanks. Any other commissioners have questions for staff?
I, I had, I had a question on the table that kind of shows density by village. I, I noticed that there's kind of overlap. And so for example, Village 4 is in the medium density column and the high density column. And does that mean basically it's can be used for both? Is there some sort of like mix that's approved within this? I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, so if you, if you look at that, it's really a range, so it's kind of up to that density. Right? So, so that's why you see different villages in, in a couple of the categories. Cause you could have townhomes in Village 2, but you could also do maybe stacked units. Right? That's, that's not accurate for Village 2, but that's just an example of, of how that could work, right? So he's, he's trying to provide, and they all can speak to this better probably, but he's trying to provide like Daniel was just saying, kind of a range, a mix of product types within each village. But within those villages, each one has a different cap, so to speak, of how dense it could get.
So basically it's just saying this village, we could build whatever we want at whatever density as long as it's listed here.
To a point, I think that's, that's true. And the applicant could speak to that as well.
Okay, cool. Thanks for clarifying, just curious. But they couldn't, for example, like I can, I can see, I guess you like
like apartments.
Three is only in the single family columns. So if, you know, if the developer wanted to add medium or high density, they would have to come back and get in zoning.
Exactly. Yep, you got it.
Can you just point out where we talked last time about how the staff didn't support reduction of parking standards?
Yes.
Reference section 14.37.060 instead in the language. Can you show me where that is?
Yes, so they have now put that in the other requirements all the way at the end. And it just says, see chapter 14.37, so it goes, points you back to our standard parking.
And this is, this is, you know, I must admit, I did not read this entire detailed thing in incredible detail, so I apologize if I've missed this, but is there any timeline? Development timeline associated with any of these changes?
Maybe explain that question a little bit.
I'm just saying, like, is there any kind of commitment on the developer's part to build within certain timeframes in order for this, or is it sort of just like carte blanche whenever it happens?
Yeah, so, so the zoning is there, the SDP 5 zone is on the ground. So it's just kind of as he builds it, as the market dictates. What he's proposing tonight is just kind of changing the rules for the zone.
Seeing any questions, I'm, I'm going to turn the time over to the applicant. There are new, there is a new commissioner here this week, just Jeff Whitlock. And so not everyone here with us here two weeks ago is here here this time.
Who, who did you replace? Well, so we've been working on this project since 2009. We bought this project from Walt Plom and the Gardner Companies back then. And we've been working on it and as you know, the city has had some sewer capacity issues. So it's actually been kind of slow going. The last two years, we've been restricted on the number of units we can build. This year we were allowed 20 and then the cap slowly increased over time. So we're able to, to keep building, which has been great. But now we're at a point where really it makes sense to change the commercial location on the project and, and really it needs some vibrancy to drive that commercial and, and get some type of commercial user. And so we've been trying to work with staff for about two years to come up with a new plan, to figure out how we can get commercial in the area, how we can, how we can drive that and, and get it in the right location. And, and this new plan is kind of in the format of your new general plan, kind of a bubble format. And, and we've used this format in other communities. I have a project in Lehigh called Holbert Farms where we have something very similar to this, this format, and it's worked really well. We have, we have all kinds of different products in the, in the community and it's all integrated together really well. And I think, I think the same intent is here for Broadview Shores. We have the core of Village 2 remaining. And what we would like to do is, is create some new integrated uses and a new product type we call our Scandinavia product line. It's a Scandinavian modern architecture. And we have it in townhomes and in single family detached, both front and rear load. And we'd like to mix all of those together and, and create a clubhouse and a swimming pool for the neighborhood. That's right down there closer towards Village 1. And then the intent here is Village 4 and Village 6 really becomes, oh, thank you. Up here, Village 6 really becomes kind of the higher density right across from the commercial. And then we'll have some mixed densities down here and some mixed densities down here with maybe some moderate densities here in the middle that, that are across the street from the elementary school. And that's kind of the intent is to just blend these densities together to help make it a vibrant, walkable and, and you know, a mixed use community that, that really everyone can be proud of at the city. We've had to deal with a lot of changes over the years, the, the parkways, the major one that we've had to adapt to. The high school being built has, has changed a lot of things in the area. The elementary school purchase and right in the middle of the, of the project has created quite a few changes as well. So we've adapted to those over time and, and we're working with staff and UDOT on this location right here to try and get this access built. Right now, we own this loop road that's really in bad shape and the island right here. It's a very unsafe intersection. And we're hoping to get that approved from UDOT real soon so we can clean up that intersection and make it a lot safer for the residents of Provo. So those are just some of the things we've been working on over the years and the intent of this change. So are there any questions for me?
Seems like when you were here two weeks ago, we talked a little bit about open spaces.
Seems like when you were here two weeks ago, we talked a little bit about open spaces. I see that you've indicated on here where they will be.
Yeah.
Thank you for that. Appreciate that.
Yeah. And, and the intent, again, it's kind of a, it's kind of a bubble format, but it looking clear back, um, at the iterations of plans, the idea is this is a power corridor and it will be a, a trail corridor here that ties into the trail corridor along Lakeview Parkway. And then the intent is to cross and do some open space over in here. We've thought about that. There's some wetlands over in here and we thought it would be really fun for these high density people to have kind of a walking boardwalk type park that maybe loops back in at the north end and ties over into the commercial. And then one thing that we're, we want to do right here is kind of a spiral hill where the, the trail peels off and goes up to a spiral here, hill with some fire pits up on top overlooking the lake as an amenity feature. We've seen that in a couple of projects throughout the country where they've done things like that that have great views. And it, it turns out really nice for the community. So that's just some of the cool things, unique things that we're looking at doing on this project.
And, and it looks like that, that wonky road off Geneva is also a mark for.
Yes. Yeah. So the, um, I don't know if any of you have seen the original design guidelines for the community, but right here is our main entry monument area. And the, I, and I don't know if any of you have seen the entry monument down here. It's a big brick entry monument with a arch planter. Uh, as you enter the community, the intent is to kind of mirror that up at this area. And we would have like a cascading waterfall feature on one side of, of the road. And then a planter to mirror the other side of the road, kind of signifying Broadview Shores and have some open space and nice entry feature as you come into the community.
Um, are all, are all, I guess, what's the sort of breakdown of like, uh, units to purchase versus to, uh, rent?
I'm not sure about that right now. So far they've all been for purchase, for sale. Yeah. And I don't know, going forward, this plan gives us flexibility to, to adapt to the market. And so we'll just see where the market takes us over the next few years. It's a little crazy right now and
Yeah.
as you all probably are seeing in the paper. So hopefully we can plan it right and come up with something that works.
Does anyone else have any questions for the applicant? Okay, let's, uh, I want to make sure we have time for the neighborhood chair. Is there anyone from the neighborhood? Is the neighborhood chair uh, here and would like to make any statement? Lakeview North Neighborhood? No? Okay, um, this time we'll open up the meeting for members of the public to comment on this item. We've received written comments and they do not need to be repeated. If you're coming up as a member of the public, please state your name and the city of your residence for the record and we will limit you to three minutes. Public here on this item? All right. With that, we'll close public comment. And we will move to, to discuss among ourselves commissioners. To discuss or raise questions or comments about, about this. I'll, I'll go first. Uh, Mr. McKay, I do appreciate you coming back with the, like Mr. Knutson said, uh, Christian Knutson said with, with the open space bubbled out and also the additional details on some of the features. Respecting the existing wetlands, making use of the utility corridors as trails. I, I mean, those are great. I, I, I like how the elementary school is right in the middle of that. And, uh, so it looks like people in that area will, will have pretty good access to them at elementary school site. But thanks for coming back with those additional details. Take another note, uh, Commissioner Weline pointed out, um, Aaron on, uh, item two, page five. Uh, about a third of the way down, uh, I think there, there might be a typo we want to correct before, before we move that. Staff believes that this amendment will, should read not have any negative impact. Does that sound right?
Yeah, thanks for finding that out. Yeah, that was the idea.
Any other commissioners want to make any comments?
Yeah, I'll just say, I mean, if, if this is doing some adjustments to plan that was made in 2008, it's probably well overdue. So it seems like the applicants worked a ton with city staff. So in my mind, it makes sense to move forward with these changes. That seems good to me.
I would agree. Thank you for making it clean and easy to see. So, looks good.
Invite the commissioners. Are there any commissioners want to make a motion? And if you haven't, I can help walk you through that. Commissioner Weline, okay, we'll, uh, we'll just start by reading item number one. Um, you'll make a motion to, I'm sorry.
All right, I'll, I'll take it then. Um, so I would make a motion that we forward a positive recommendation to the city council for this general plan map amendment. Brad McKay requesting approval of a general plan map amendment to appendix C six in relation to adjustments of developmental, development standards in the SDP five villages at Celebration, specific development plan overlays on Lakeview North Neighborhood. Can we do two as well? Want to do them separate?
Okay.
Hi.
Yay.
Hi.
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 Okay, that's a unanimous vote in favor of recommending approval. Six to six zero and for item number two.
Yeah, I can make a motion on that. I make a motion that we, um, recommend approval to the city council for item number two. Brad McKay requests, um, approval for ordinance text amendment to chapter 14.49E Provo City Code to adjust development standards to end the SDP five zone and to amend the related development agreement.
Second it.
Caleb, we'll do roll calling in Commissioner Whitlock.
Hi.
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 All right. We'd like to thank, uh, Mr. McKay and staff for their help and support with this. And thank you commissioners. We'll move on to the next items in the agenda items three and four. Let's see, I, I'll read those in. Uh, item number three, Austin Taylor requests approval of a concept plan for a new one family dwelling with an accessory apartment in the proposed low density residential zone located at 769 West, 200 North Dixon Neighborhood. And item number four, Austin Taylor requests approval of a zone map amendment from the residential conservation zone to the low density residential zone in order to build a new one family dwelling with an accessory apartment located at 769 West, 200 North Dixon Neighborhood. Mr. Ardmore.
Okay, thank you. Um, so first let me just kind of orient you. Uh, so here is the property on the map. It is just off of 200 North across the street from, uh, the existing Dixon Middle School up here. Currently the property has a single family home with an approved but not currently in use accessory apartment. And that is an approved and legal use through the, in the RC zone. What the applicant is hoping for is to add a second dwelling on that property on the rear. Um, so you can see the general plan is for residential use. So their request complies with that. Uh, the current zone, like we said, is RC. The proposed zone is LDR, uh, in an effort to provide an additional dwelling unit on the back end there. Um, so you can see how the site would change. Uh, the existing home would stay with its ability to have accessory apartment if owner occupied. Then the, uh, the middle of the property would provide the parking for both of the homes and their accessory apartments. So you have four covered spots here with carport and then the four tandem spots behind those. Um, so each home to have an accessory apartment, you need four spaces, four off-street spaces. Uh, so that's why eight have been provided on this concept plan. And then the addition of the new dwelling here in the back again, with an option to have an accessory apartment if it is owner occupied. Um, so as staff reviewed this site plan, um, there are, there are a few things about this. If you go back to the property itself or the block, really, um, you could see a variety of land uses. You could see, uh, twin home or not twin homes duplexes, single family homes and a couple apartment structures. So on the northeast corner, there's a multiple family dwelling and then on the southeast, there's multiple family dwelling. Um, so, uh, though all of it is zone RC, you, you do have quite a variety just on this block. Uh, you'd find similar characteristics as you expand out through the Dixon neighborhood. There's quite a variety of, of land uses, uh, different kind of residential product types through the Dixon neighborhood. Um, so what the applicant is proposing is making, uh, use of a, of a large rear yard and providing additional dwelling unit, providing more, uh, residential dwelling units for Provo City. Um, so as I went through this request, I, I kind of compared it to, to the general plans, policies and goals and and we found that this proposal does, in staff's opinion, meet a lot of those policies and goals by providing additional housing in the city, but more than that, providing what would essentially have, have to be owner occupied. Housing, which is a goal in, in general plan for Provo City. Uh, if, if they want to make use of these accessory apartments, uh, they would have to be owner occupied. And that's, that's something that the city has been focused on ever since I started working here. That's, that's been a goal, um, no matter what neighborhood you live in. Um, so we feel that this is appropriate, uh, concept. We feel like the, the zone to get the tool being used to get this additional home is appropriate, uh, with the LDR zone. And, um, the permitted uses in that zone. You, you could do other arrangements on this. I kind of noted this in the staff report. It doesn't have to look like this with the LDR zone. Uh, typically somebody could come back and tear everything down on the property and, and rent some townhomes on the property or something like that. So that was a concern that staff had. Uh, as we expressed that concern with the applicant, he proffered the, the idea to, to commit to, to this site plan, to this concept plan, to these uses. Uh, so we're comfortable with that moving forward. And as the city council hears it, um, they'll be able to kind of see a proposed development agreement that, that kind of secures those, those concepts in. Um, so with those things, staff's in favor of this. We think it's a, a benefit to the neighborhood and a, a good addition to unused space, a, a good infill project. And, uh, I'm, I'm happy to take any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Ardmore. Any questions from commissioners for planning staff?
I have a couple of questions. So this hasn't been, what we're, what we're being asked is whether or not to approve an LDR zone change.
We'll recommend, you're recommending on the zone and then you're making decision on the concept plan. Yep.
So do each of those two separate units meet the lot requirements for two separate units?
Yes. So, so they're good on setbacks. They, they're good on all the different regulation standards, um, site standards of the LDR zone.
And how do you get in and out to that second home?
Sure. Uh, maybe this would be the best. Uh, so the driveway here, the existing driveway would take you back to the parking stalls here and then the front entry here. You can kind of see it better on, on these renderings. Uh, this is the driveway here on the, the west side of the home. That's, that's where the existing driveway for the home is currently. Um, the parking is in a similar spot as the future expanded parking would be. Uh, and the second home would use that same access and parking.
And then, um, you said you need to have four spots per unit, per home.
Yes.
You're gonna have an accessory apartment. So, but then those, those lot, uh, parking spots are stacked. Is that correct?
Right. Yeah. Provo City allows, uh, tandem uh, to stack two in tandem for the same unit. Um, so, so that meets the, the parking standards of Provo City. Yep.
Okay. And then, um, could you do the same thing without going to a, without changing to, um, LDR zone?
You couldn't. So the RC zone is, is probably one of the most restrictive zones we have in the city. It, it essentially froze whatever the legal use on individual properties was in 2002. So if it was this certain use in 2002, the RC is on that property and that's how it can ever be. So there's, there's really no ability to change anything without a zone change.
So if the, if it's big enough for two separate lots, like you can't just subdivide it and
The RC doesn't allow a subdivision of land. So it's like I said, it's a pretty restrictive zone.
So you couldn't, you couldn't, if you owned a piece of property like this with this huge unused piece, you couldn't subdivide that?
Not without a zone map amendment first.
And a zone map amendment would mean you'd have to change to an LDR?
Uh, not necessarily an LDR. There's a number of zones, um, in title 14 that you could use.
So could we recommend a zone map amendment and get this done?
Yeah. And that's what's being proposed, right? So one of the two applications is the zone map amendment from the RC to the LDR. And the other application in front of you is the concept plan showing.
I guess what I'm wondering is, when you say an amendment, can you amend the RC zone to allow this, to allow subdivision?
I suppose that's a different avenue, uh, to pursue. I think that would be more difficult because that's, the RC zone is in a lot of places in the city and that'd be a citywide amendment that would open the door for a lot of different situations and a lot of different neighborhoods. I think that'd be
I guess what I'm wondering is this, isn't this concerning to open up a lot of things in the city too, to be able to take an RC, RC zone and just like pick and choose where you want to change it to an LDR zone?
Um, in my opinion, no, not necessarily. I think, um, each zone change is, is kind of judged on its own merits and on its own concept.
So it wouldn't be setting a precedent for other people to say, well, you did it here. So
I don't believe so.
Okay.
So Aaron, for it to be legal, since here the entire site to be occupied by two owner occupied families. So each owner has to occupy their home.
So to make use of the So to make use of the accessory apartments that are being, that the one home already, it's built into it, and then the new home would have that built into it, to make use of those, the owner of the home would have to live in the home.
Okay, of each home.
Of each home.
So that effectively means the back home, like basically it needs to be sold, or Austin needs to move and sell the front home?
Right, so, so there'd be a plat that, that shows the, the two different parcels and then the common area between the two homes.
Gotcha.
Didn't they used to call these flag lots?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Flag lot is kind of a different way to do it, yep. So a flag lot is essentially, if I can go back to the map here, if you were to parcel off this front home and have its own access, and then this driveway only belonging to the back property, that would be the flag lot. That's not what's being proposed here, but that is another way to get to a similar arrangement. No, that would still require a zone change, yep.
And it would, that flag lot would require maybe an access easement or
Right, yeah.
At least the common portion of the drive.
Yeah, it's, it's a little bit more difficult to do a flag lot in this situation just because of the, the property lines and the setbacks from those property lines. It'd be more difficult to try to work that into it.
In an RC zone, want to make use of a flag lot, then what did you manage to put on?
So, so RC zone, again, you couldn't subdivide the land, so you'd have to rezone it even to an R1 six would allow a flag lot.
Other questions for planning staff? Let's have the applicant come forward, Mr. Taylor. Please state your name and your affiliation with this project.
Yeah, okay, thanks commissioners. I'm Austin Taylor. I'm the owner of the site, and to answer questions about flag lots, really briefly, I would have loved to subdivide and do the flag lot and then sell them as separate fee simple houses, but there are two things that prevent me from doing that. One is the 20-foot minimum frontage requirement for flag lots. You essentially have to have a 20-foot driveway. My, my lot is 50 feet wide, and all I've got is the 12 feet, so that's not possible because of the driveway. And then the second is the minimum lot sizes for the R1 zones. At the smallest, it's 6,000 square feet, from what I remember, and my lot's 10,000 square feet. So the math doesn't add up there. And so that's why what I'm proposing is basically to make the land common area, and then the two houses individually owned, sold separately. And I have, if, if you'd allow, I have a quick presentation that I could run through to show you more about the concept plan. Would that be okay?
And do, or do you have any equipment that you need set up, or is that all hooked up ready?
I give not a flash drive. It's updated, just like two slides.
Okay.
If that's okay.
Here we go.
Okay, let's check if this, yep. Okay, so the purpose, what I'm trying to do here is provide an attainable home in the downtown area where the owner could live in the main section. They could rent out an ADU. Essentially, we're, we're, this is a housing type that is not that common in downtown Provo. Most of the time, you have pretty small homes that have been subdivided into duplexes and triplexes, and so the unit size is typically not large enough to have a family in. So my goal is to have an owner-occupied home with a family, you know, big enough to have kids in the main unit, and then a small ADU that makes it affordable. This is just a quick table that shows the zone change and the differences between the two. You guys already know about this stuff. A brief introduction to the Dixon neighborhood. It's a place that's mixed density and mixed use. In the Dixon neighborhood, you'll find single-family homes on 10,000 square foot lots, but you'll also find three-story apartment buildings. You'll find stores, you'll find schools. It's a great walkable, missing-middle, mixed-density-type neighborhood. You can walk to grocery stores, you can walk to the rec center, you can walk to UVX. So I, I believe it's a great place to incrementally add density. What I'm proposing to do has been done in the neighborhood before. These are three examples in the Dixon neighborhood of infill homes that are separately owned on what appears to be the same parcel. So there's at least three occurrences of it in the Dixon neighborhood, and there are quite a few more in Joaquin, Franklin, and Temp if you look for them there. Aaron showed you my site already with the site plan. These are the renderings of it. So the house in the front is, it's my house. It's a 1914 home. And then the house in the back is designed to match that Spanish style. It's got similar roof linings, similar materials. These are the elevations of it. And the floor plan, if you're interested, the main unit is on the top floor with half of the basement. In total, the main unit has three bedrooms and two bathrooms, and then the ADU has one bedroom, one bathroom. The main unit's about 1,500 square feet, and the ADU's about 500 square feet, for a total of 2,000 square feet. My wife and I bought this home back in 2017, and we, we've worked to improve it. We've redone landscaping, beautified the home, you know, new doors, new stairway. We wanted to, to bring the Spanish feel back into the home and preserve it. And so that, that's why we want to see the home preserved as well through this redevelopment. We don't want to tear down the home at all. We, we think it's a beautiful home. Some strategies that I'll follow on this development. My architect is into passive house design, which means highly insulated buildings using minimal electricity. If you looked on the, on the concept plan, you'll see that the paving is permeable paving. That's something that Provo City code allows so that when it rains, the water can seep into the soil instead of be funneled into the gutters. Number of different, you know, lead building things that I follow. And this is the, the final rendering. So happy to take any questions y'all have.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Any commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, so here's to know with not being able to subdivide the land, does the person who buys the second house, do they just own like the pad of the house? Is that how it works?
Yeah, that's exactly right. And there's an, there's another thing that, there's a similar project like this in the Franklin neighborhood, just a block south of City Hall here, and that's exactly what he's doing as well. He had a, a one-third acre lot, and he couldn't subdivide small enough, or big enough to meet the city's minimum lot size. And so each house is individually owned, and then the land is common area that the homeowners have to, you know, find a way to, they agree through an HOA to maintain it together, hire a company to maintain it.
Presentation was great, like that.
Thanks. Yeah, I have a good architect, right?
I just, I love the concept of having a small accessory apartment to make the house affordable for a family. I wish it could be a tiny bit bigger square footage for the family, you know, like 2,000 square feet. 1,500 is still little. There's no way to get more though, probably.
So as I could, then I'd have to sell the house for more too, and then it becomes unaffordable. So, I mean, it's a question of how, you know, how, how far do we want to go? And then it's also difficult to fit it on a small lot like this. And my, I live in a 1,500 square foot home, and I like it.
I have neighbors that raise six kids in 1,500 square feet, so I know it can be done.
Yeah.
But she's complained many times.
I mean, if you, if you read stories of people who lived in Provo 100 years ago, that's what they did, right?
No one else has any questions for the applicant. I want to invite the neighborhood chair, if, if they're present to offer any comments or feedback. Seeing none. We will open up this portion of the, the hearing to the public, members of the public, to comment on this item. For purposes of this item, we're only going to allow comment as to the zone map amendment. Well, I mean, it's really both, but that's the legislative portion. So, yeah. Please come forward, any members of the public. State your name and city of residence.
Okay, so my name's Michael Bradley. I live in Provo. I actually used to live right next to Austin when he lived there. He was a great neighbor. Sad to see him move to Salt Lake. I don't know if this is the proper way to address this, but I've lived in my house since 2001. Moved my family in there. We bought the property because of the backyard space, the openness. You step out of the house, and it was just beautiful. We didn't know what we were buying at the time, because when we first went in, our house was tiny, about the same size as Austin's former house that he's trying to add on into the back. But when we stepped out into the backyard, we saw the openness of the yard and all the adjacent properties just being open and trees and greenery and everything, and I have no malice against Austin. I'm grateful that he's trying to further his financial stability or whatever, but I love my property for what it is. And that's one of the reasons why I bought the property is because of the yard and being able to step out there and see just openness. I grew up in Germany, and that's what we have in Germany, is just openness. We have big communities, but there's yard space. I'm sorry if I'm nervous. I've never spoken to you guys before. But I would really hate to see that openness disappear by having a two-story building built next to my backyard where people are driving in and out constantly, eight cars, if all the occupants are living there with their own cars, causing that pollution and stuff for my car, for my home and stuff. So I know you guys have the best interest of Provo in mind. I love what has happened with our new building over there. That waterfall looks great, and I want Austin to be able to further his whatever, but he's not going to be living there. He's not living there now, but I do. I was hoping that other people from the neighborhood would come and speak their mind as well. But that, that's just my, my two cents.
Thank you, Mr. Bradley.
Can I ask a question of Mr. Bradley? Was there a neighborhood meeting held? The, the staff report says that there was. Did you attend that?
I was not informed of a neighborhood meeting. I got this in the mail, which was sent out from you guys about the meeting here tonight. I was never told about a neighborhood meeting or anything. So if there was one and I missed it, I'm sorry.
Is there any other questions? Not, not for you, but I'm curious. What is the general, like, procedure for neighborhood meetings, like notifying residents?
So that's, that's a city council program, and it's, it's run between the neighborhood chair and the applicant typically. The city staff is kind of not part of that process. But on, on rezones, it is a requirement per code to have a neighborhood meeting, and we understand that one was held on February 3rd.
So a neighborhood meeting was had, but none, we don't know if there was anyone in attendance or...
I didn't get the full report back from the neighborhood chair on this one. Sometimes we get like a written report back, so I'm not sure how many attended or, or anything like that.
You were at the meeting, yeah.
Um, Mr. Taylor, could you come up? I, I'm going to allow you some time to make any clarifying comment, statements or, or response to the neighborhood comments of Mr. Bradley and, and the neighborhood meeting.
Okay, the, the neighborhood meeting was held, it was a long time ago. It was, I don't remember the exact date, but it was in fall of last year. And so Ben Ellis is the neighborhood chair of the Dixon neighborhood, and he just put out a call on the neighborhood Facebook group as is typical, and honestly, it was just him and me that showed up. So it was, it was just us, but he did make that public announcement as is typically done. And then I, I did go to Michael's house, and I brought a, these renderings, and then I, I went to my other next-door neighbor and gave the renderings as well. Just told them about it, told them that they could come and comment to planning commission.
Is there any response to his? I guess his concern was that he felt it affect a, a two-story building would affect his, the open space, the openness of the, his lot and player of his lot. Do you have a response to that?
Yeah, I mean, it would reduce privacy in the backyard, and that's something that, you know, the city has to make that decision of when we're facing a housing affordability crisis and increasing population, you know, what are the trade-offs? Do we, do we want to allow more housing and maybe decrease privacy? Or do we want to keep backyard privacy? One thing I am doing around, around the house is planting trees, and eventually it may, you know, it may buffer the building. And I'm also not tearing down any of the large trees. If you look at the concept plan, I was very strict with my architect. I said we can't, at the site plan, I said we can't tear down any of the major big trees. We have at least one, and so, so the big trees are staying.
It was my understanding you were living, you were living in the home. Are you not living in the home?
No, I'm not. I'm, I'm just renting it out until I can, you know, get approval to build or not. If I don't get approval, then I'll sell it, look at something else to do, and then if I do get approval, then rent it to one family as is legal until I can finish the construction and then sell them both.
Is there one family in that right now?
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Any other members from the public wanting to comment? Okay, we'll close the public comments. Commissioners, this is our time to further discuss and raise any questions or comments.
I have another question for staff. The applicant provided some examples of where this has been done already in the Dixon neighborhood. What is the square footage of those properties?
I don't have that information on hand. I didn't, I didn't know that was going to be presented, but I can get that information for you at a later date.
I guess the reason I'm asking is sometimes a property is so small that trying to cram things in, even though it's the same, those other properties may be much larger. And so it's not, it doesn't feel as much like you're trying to cram things in. Anyway, I was just curious how big those were.
I, I could see that, like I, a 10,000 square foot lot is, is pretty good sized. I think my very first home, when it was in Henderson, Nevada, it was just over 1,600 square feet, but it was on a, I think it was on a 4,300 square foot lot. Had enough in the backyard to, to have a player and a shed, but, but yeah, if, on a 10,000 square foot lot, having, having two homes on that, I, I can see that, yeah.
Yes, for the discussion, in my mind, this seems like a really
a really good infill project because, you know, I'm sure similar projects could come in and say, I want to build a fourplex here or duplex. None of them are owner occupied. No one, no one gets to own a home in that situation. So in my mind, you know, this creates at least two families who are invested in the community, who own, you know, a house there that also, even if it's only fifteen hundred square feet, I mean, maybe when you guys were looking at homes, that was feasible to look for something larger, but I think most people looking to buy homes these days, you know, young families, fifteen hundred square feet is about what you can afford. So, I mean, having that plus the supplemental income of being able to rent out an accessory dwelling unit, which could go to another young couple is, you know, I think this is the kind of stuff that more cities need. Because it allows for that ownership as well as actual affordability of housing. And it is unfortunate that we can lose views to it, but large trees can obstruct views, big, big sheds can obstruct views in it. I think, you know, it is, it is unfortunate and we, we could wish that, I mean, I wish my house didn't have anyone else's house around it, so I could see all everyone's, the view from everywhere, but that's just kind of the nature of living in a city and so in my mind, this, this seems like pretty cut and dry, smart kind of project.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make another comment. One, I do like the site plan. It, it kind of has some respect towards the RC zone that it integrates. It ma- it, it keeps the, the original home. And then integrates the second home in, in style and architecture. Rather than demolishing it. The whole, the whole thing and, and building something else. And, and the applicant also expressed a willingness to enter into a development agreement. Where where a product like that wouldn't be switched on us, a bait and switch on us. Also, in terms of using stuff, I'm, I, I think about my parents, they they have like a third of an acre and they had a unobstructed view of Mount Tipinogus for like a good 10 years and, and then the lot behind them sold. And, and with that, it was a modest, you know, two-story home. They lost the view of, of Mount Tip. There was some loss of privacy for sure and openness in that view, but yeah, I, I recognize that, that's something that happens. Whether in, in a lot of development areas. Something, something we don't take lightly either.
What is the maximum that can, density that can be put in an LDR zone?
The LDR caps out at twelve units per acre.
So what would prevent somebody in the future from buying these two homes, turning them down and putting in twelve units?
The development agreement.
That would go past this ownership?
Right, it runs with the land.
It, it lives with the land, so it's forever.
Right. Yeah.
I think economically that'd also be just infeasible to buy those, especially a new house and tear it down. It's going to cost you tons of money to buy it first and foremost, and then tear it down. So even if something like that were feasible, it'd be a hundred years from now when it's actually degraded into a point where it's, you know, you can't fix it. So I don't think. Yeah, it just, the cost would be, you know.
So, learning on the fly here, so the purpose of our commission basically is, and this question at hand is not necessarily a political, as much as, you know, I empathize a lot with the gentleman. It's not necessarily a political consideration, right? It's like, it's basically, are we considering, does this proposal in line with the general plan and the goals of the city as stated, correct? Or, or can you help just counsel us on what we're supposed to be considering here?
That's right. Yeah, I mean, it is a legislative decision on the zone change. So there are other considerations that become a part of it. But yeah, as a planning commissioner, you're, you're looking at primarily the, the goals and policies of the general plan and whether the proposal, the proposed zone would, would comply with those.
Yeah, because what I would say to the gentleman is, you know, you should, you have the right to petition the city council and if you want to organize and come to the city council, I mean, that's well within your right, but for as far as I consider the goals of the plan and the goals of the general plan and the city, it seems to be well aligned with those. That's what I think.
Any other discussion or comments from the commissioners? Would, would anyone like to make a motion?
This is for item three.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I can make that motion if. Okay, let me see here. So this is the, we're making a recommendation to city council, right? Or is this word?
On item three, you're, you're deciding.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, gotcha. The concept plan. Okay. So I move that we approve the concept plan for the new one-family dwelling with an accessory apartment in a proposed low-density residential, low-density residential zone located at seven, six, nine west, two hundred north Dixon neighborhood.
Do you want to add with the conditions?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Okay. With, with the conditions that the remaining CRC comments are addressed at project plan and that the zone change to LDR is approved and a development agreement is signed. Is there anything else missing?
Any other amendments or comments that need to be added to that commissioners? Is there a second on the motion?
All second.
Second by Commissioner Newtonson. Let's have roll call or vote, starting with Commissioner Whitlock.
Hi.
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 Hey.
Hi.
That's unanimous, six, zero, all in favor of recommending approval for item number three. How about item number four? Zone map amendment. Any motions or further discussion on that? Ready for a motion?
I can motion. I recommend approval to the council for item number four. Austin Taylor requests approval of a zone map amendment from the residential conservation RC zone to the low-density residential LDR zone in order to build a new one-family dwelling with an accessory apartment located at seven sixty-nine west, two hundred north Dixon neighborhood. With the following conditions. One, that a development agreement is signed to ensure that no more than one additional single-family home with an accessory dwelling unit is permitted on the property.
A second on the motion?
Yeah, I can second that.
We will vote Commissioner Whitlock.
Hi.
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 Okay, that's six to zero in favor of approval to the city council, recommending approval for the city council. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. We will move on to the next item in the agenda. Item number five, Development Services Department requests an amendment to the sign code chapter fourteen point three eight to prohibit electronic display signs in the proposed mixed-use and neighborhood mixed-use zone, citywide application. Mr. Weaver, with your staff report.
Thank you. And I'm going to, since there are a few new members here, just to kind of give a quick recap, a few months ago, we went, I proposed these zones here in planning commission, we went through study session, we went into commission with a positive recommendation, then we went to, and then I went to council and there were some questions about signs. And in that discussion in council, they were, they made comment about prohibiting electronic signs within these proposed zones. As staff went and looked at these, looked at that and took a further analysis, we saw that we we recommend, we were recommending to also add these into prohibiting electronic displays signs within these proposed zones. And additionally, the second thing is since we recently adopted the airport zones, one of the, the acronym for the airport zone is an A and in the, within the sign code, it said for agriculture A, but now that we have that acronym, the correct acronym for agriculture zone is A1. So we are just rectifying that, that way there's no confusion with that. Other any questions?
Just a clarifying one. Where are these kinds of signs permitted in which zones? I mean, is this like the electronic boards, like the ones that are getting a lot of flack at like University Avenue? At that like medical facility, like one of those, is that the kind we're talking about?
They're primarily allowed in our commercial zones.
Okay. But we want to not do it in this kind because it's mixed use.
Correct. And we allow a different type of sign types within the proposed zones. It's just that they won't, the only type of illumination for these would be internally or externally illuminated.
Gotcha, perfect.
Yeah, I have a question. Forgive me if I overlooked it in the report, but how about with campus mixed use? There's been some projects that came up, some CMU projects that came up where signage was an issue and, and I'm wondering what standards are for those if, if electronic signs where, where they are with.
So we're currently looking into some things for that and hoping, hopefully we'll maybe bring back something in the future, later date. But as for standards, I believe that was when that application was brought forward a couple of weeks ago with Aaron, just for seeking clarification on, on that sign permit for it. So technically within, I mean, within this, these are the existing zones that allow for electronic signs. CMU is not within this, so technically it would be permitted, but we haven't seen that application forward. So these, these zones are the ones that ban them.
Gotcha.
But like, like with that application, it we went with the most types of regulation that best be seek fit for that zone.
What's the impetus for this? Just curious.
I'm sorry?
What's the impetus for this? Like what problem is this solving?
It just does not allow for electronic signs within these proposed zones as they're built outside where there's no sometimes electronic signs can be really bright.
No, I understand, but I, I understand like the case, but I'm just wondering like, why is this coming before us now? Is it like to clarify something that wasn't previously clarified?
In discussion with council, it was just they discussed that they would like to have electronic signs banned, banned in these proposed zones. That was not part of the initial ordinance amendment. So this is a subsequent application open to rectify that.
I see. So these are new, these are new zones. And as part, and as part of the new zones, this was not part, a requirement within the zones. And so we're adding that to these new zones.
Correct. The proposed zones are technically not zones yet. They're, they're hopefully going to council this following meeting.
I understand. Thank you.
So we, we're trying not to replicate university places electronic sign in the mixed use.
In the mixed use zones.
We don't want another one of those?
Yeah, and yes, in these zones.
Like a massive one on University Parkway, State Street?
And within our existing sign code, we do not allow animated signs either.
What's the likelihood we could prohibit this on every zoning in Provo?
Application, an application have to be made.
Lobby council.
Ultimately, it would be counter decision.
Personal opinion, I guess.
Way too biased.
They just don't look good anywhere. So I'm, I mean, I'm for this. The more we can prohibit it, the better in my mind, but.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Weaver? Seeing none. I will, it's the neighborhood chair, old is citywide. Any neighborhood chairs present? None? Open this up for public comment. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address this matter? I see none. With that, we'll close the public comment. No clarifying statements by the applicant. Let's, commissioners? Would you like to further discuss or raise questions or comments? Are we ready for motion? Mr. is going to bring us a motion?
And we forward a positive. We posit, forward a positive recommendation to the municipal council on item number five. The Development Services Department requires an amendment to the sign code chapter fourteen point three eight to prohibit electronic display signs in the proposed mixed-use MU and neighborhood mixed-use NMU zones. This has citywide application.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Kendall seconds. Let's, let's have a vote on the matter. Commissioner Whitlock?
Hi.
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 That's a unanimous recommending approval of the proposed ordinance to municipal council. There's nothing else. Does anyone want to bring a motion to adjourn?
I can make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Again.
Okay, the meeting is adjourned at seven twenty-three. Thank you, everybody for participating.